I'd like to come to order at this time, please. Thank you. We're back from closed session and we'd like our Ms. Cooper, please tell us what went down into closed session.
Thank you, President Brown. There were two horrible actions out of closed session this evening. The first is that the Board approved a settlement agreement with Mr. Coleman Griffith. By unanimous vote, Dr. Fellow absent pursuant to the settlement agreement, Mr. Griffith was resigning for retirement. The other is, in closed session, the Board approved an agreement with former college president, Dr. Mark Rocha, by unanimous vote, Dr. Fellow absent. I wish to state at this time that the agreement the Board has just approved is not the same agreement as was previously approved. It is a different agreement than the ones that was subsequently voided by the court. The new agreement contains new and additional terms which include a resolution of any claims that may have accrued since the prior settlement agreement, including any claims related to Dr. Rocha's status as an employee of the district in the intervening period. The agreement also contains new obligations of defense and indemnity as consideration. And that's all.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time I will ask for Dr. Mann to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Mann. We'd like to welcome you to our Board of Trustees meeting for June 17, 2015. Introductions.
Yes, it's my honor and pleasure tonight to introduce someone who needs no introduction, our student trustee, Marshall Lewis. If you could come up to the podium, please, and Ms. Brown and I will meet you up there.
(Inaudible). There he is. (Inaudible). On behalf of the Board Trustees, President Brown and I want to thank you for an incredible year and give you just a very small token of the Board's gratitude and certainly my gratitude as the Inter superintendent president for your year with us here at PCC as a student trustee. You've been with PCC for how many years, Mark?
Three now.
Three years. As everybody, I think, knows about Marshall, turns I can see a little bit, Marshall is not only a great student here at PCC, student trustee, but he's a decorated war hero, several tours in Iraq, a great, great American, incredible student and a wonderful individual that I've had the pleasure to know over these past three years. And I'm gonna make, can I make an announcement? Where are you going?
Oh, sure.
Is that okay? And he has now been accepted to USC, he's transferring to USC.
(Applause).
Best wishes to you. I know you're gonna be around. You're gonna be around. And then, yes, we always give him something.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
We could give him a flag or we could give him...
Okay.
(Inaudible).
No more introductions, so I think we can move on.
I thought we had to. The oath of office.
Which is at the next item on the agenda.
We should have taken her over there.
Okay, so I think we're going to go ahead and do the oath of office for our new trustee.
That's right.
So, is Kelly Bond with us? Kelly Bond is at the table. How are you, Kelly?
I'm very good, thank you.
Very good. So, everyone needs to know that Kelly is our newly-elected student trustee, so a round of applause. (Applause). Here, we'll go ahead and President Brown will provide the oath of office.
I guess we have to, should we do it here or go back over there?
You can do it right here, and I'll just hold the microphone up so everybody can hear you.
So, Kelly, would you raise your right hand?
(Indistinct).
I, Kelly Bond...
I, Kelly Bond...
Do swear...
Do swear...
That I will support and defend...
That I will support and defend...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies...
Foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic...
That I will bear true faith...
That I will bear true faith...
And allegiance...
And allegiance...
To the Constitution of the United States and...
Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely...
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation...
Or purpose...
Or purpose...
Or evasion...
Or evasion...
And I will well and faithfully...
I will well and faithfully...
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties...
Upon which I'm about to enter...
Upon which I'm about to enter...
Congratulations...
Thank you.
And welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to public comments. We have quite a few public cards here, I think. So let me just tell you that we have 30 minutes, a total of 30 minutes for public comments. And each, how many cards do we have? Just, just demand.
We have nine on one item and one on another.
Okay, so it's not that many, huh? Okay, great. So, each one of you will have three minutes to speak, and we will begin.
Okay, the first speaker is Ernestine Moore, who will be followed by Delano Yarborough.
Thank you very much. This is not a place that I've usually been. I'm here tonight to speak about Joe Perone and my experiences working with him when I was VP of Student Services at PCC. In my position, I had to work with the coaches and the students in athletics. Joe was one of the best coaches to work with. He was always organized and would confer with me if there were college policies that he thought may adversely affect his students or processes he was using. He always checked in if he was going to do something different to ensure that it would not have a negative impact on the students. He did this when he was recruiting students out of the local area and when he was speaking to parents. The students were always first. I was totally surprised when I heard that there was some concern about his integrity. That is not the Joe Perone that I have known through the years. Joe would not do anything that would compromise the success of the students. He has had a long history as a champion for student success and a long history of respect by his colleagues and the Pasadena community. Students trusted him, and he was a father to many of the students. He made sure that they had access to the appropriate college resources and that they had good living conditions if they were out of state and although the students were adults. He maintained contact with their parents. When I heard about the so-called incident at PCC, I was appalled and knew that this was something that he would not do. He is, and has always been about students. I was further perplexed when I heard the severe punishment that was handed down, which seemed excessive. He is a great and beloved coach. He does not play games with student lives. He is also honest, and if he makes a mistake, he will acknowledge it. This community has a great deal of respect for him and what he has done for our young people. He has worked hard at developing programs that are inclusive and meet the needs of our community. He is about success and student success. I hope that you will give serious consideration to any decision that you're making about him. He is well-respected among students and among the total community, and he really has demonstrated throughout his career at PCC and his career in the community that he cares about students. And you will probably see a lot of those students who have benefited from the kind of guidance that he has given them. So I hope that you will not make any rash decisions, that you will look into all the possible things that are happening, and that you will make a decision that is good, not only for Joe, but good for the students in this community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. (Applause). Delano Yarborough, followed by Gary Moore.
I want to take this time to Mrs. Brown, President, and members of the PCC trustee Board and the administration. I want to just summarize some points that were discovered during an inquiry that we made. And this inquiry was by telephone, it was by personal interviews, and also seeking information from the NCAA guidelines relative to violations. And I want to share with you what I found out. First of all, the penalty, based upon my conversations, and all of these facts and points can be verified. The penalty is severe and may not have a similar case in the SCC. I talked to the league office. I wanted to get guidelines used to assess penalties. When given the situation like Coach Perone's case and the penalty, I was informed that the penalty was severe and unusual. I wanted also to see if the district's response was just. I was informed that there were no written guidelines and that penalties are decided on a case-by-case basis. In some cases where insufficient evidence exists to support a charge of a major violation, and based upon the information that we have, this was not a major violation. The case is dismissed. There are questions relative to the depth of the investigation that occurred. I talked to former A.D.s and personnel in the conference and the area at community college levels. Without exception, I was informed that the offense did not justify the penalty. Did the district conclusions depend upon talking to parties directly involved in the alleged recruiting violation? I was, a decision made by an email that did indicate that Joe Perone was involved, but assumed involvement by association. Secondly, what would have happened if Coach Perone had not kept the female student from being on the streets and something serious happened? The college and the coach would have been liable and negligent since she called in distress. Coach Perone indicated...
Sorry, your time is almost up, Mr. Yarborough.
Say again?
Your time is almost up.
Okay, I'm just about finished.
Okay, good.
Coach Perone indicated to me that he accepts responsibility for the action. What if that incident had involved your daughter? What would you have wanted Coach Perone to do in that critical situation? I'm gonna give you a copy of several pages that I got from your website of the success of the girls' basketball team under Joe, Coach Perone's tenure. Thank you.
Thank you. (Applause). Gary Moody, followed by Kimberly Wong.
Good evening. Excuse me. Good evening. For the record, this is Gary Moody. And that's Gary Lindwood Moody, President of Pasadena Branch of the NAACP. I'm also an alumni at Pasadena City College and a scholarship athlete that received a scholarship in track and field in 1970 to go on to San Jose State and break the record in the triple jump in 1972. But I would not have been able to do any of that if it wasn't from some of the stellar coaching that I received at Pasadena City College under Mickey Anderson and Walt Butler. The same goes for Coach Joe Perone. The 20 years that he's been here, there are hundreds of athletes that have gone on to stellar successes outside of the field of basketball. Legendary is one regarding the Tiana Saunders recognition at the community college level. To look at the fact that you can have someone that represents the city of Pasadena and the city college to go on to international fame also says in regards to the foundation that you received here as a student athlete at Pasadena City College. There has been no other coach in the history of Pasadena City College that has done what Joe Perone has done here for his athletes. (Applause). I defer the fact that, right now, you've seen the facts that are based upon not only his abilities as a leader, but also his life skills as a mental health professional. Because it takes a lot more than what you would see to bring an athlete from a high school to matriculate to a college, go to Division One, set precedents throughout the United States of America, win a gold medal in the Olympics representing the city of Pasadena. Joe Perone, Mickey Anderson, and others that represent the College of Pasadena City College is something that we should take into consideration when we look at the successes. These infractions basically do not weigh anywhere near the successes that he's had. You should reconsider, reinstate, to make sure that this program continues. Thank you.
(Applause). Kimberly Wong, followed by Joe Perone.
Hi, my name is Kim Wong, and this is in regards to the recruiting violation. Sydney Hua is a close friend of mine. We attended UCSD together last year. During that time, she mentioned to me that she wanted to play college ball. Excited, I told Coach Perone that I would try to get Sydney to play for him. As a former player at PCC, I recommended that she play for Coach Perone. However, she decided to play at LA Valley. She told me she was only interested in playing college ball for one year. As her season came to an end, I asked her if she was planning on playing for another year. She was. Mike, an employee at Pasadena City College, and I decided to see if she'd be interested in playing for Coach P for next season. She wasn't. I told Coach P that she was set on playing for LA Valley. Coach P never mentioned her after that, nor did he ever contact Sydney in an attempt to recruit her to his program. I asked Sydney if Coach Perone ever contacted her, and she said no. In addition, I was never interviewed about this recruiting investigation, which I felt like I should have been since I was the one involved in asking Sydney to play for Coach Perone. Coach Perone did not violate any recruiting violations because he never spoke with Sydney. He had no knowledge that Mike and I asked her to play at PCC. Thank you for your time.
(Applause). Joe Perone, followed by Judith Espinoza.
Thank you. I'm Coach Joe Perone, and let me shed some light on some words that are being used. Formal probation and sanction. Formal probation means I would have a meeting with management once a month for 12 months. That's formal probation, directly from the commissioner. Sanction comes from the conference after multiple offenses from different sports after being on probation for a period of time. That's not the case here. No team at PCC would be sanctioned from playoffs if I'm the coach and these allegations were true. Eight-game suspension maximum and formal probation, that's what the commissioner has been persuaded to recommend. As far as the recruiting, I did not authorize or sanction anyone's action, nor did I know of them. I have nothing to do with any of that, as you have just heard. That's not what I do at PCC. It's not what I've done at PCC. So that accusation should be removed totally from the case that wasn't thoroughly investigated from our standpoint. My request is to have an independent investigation and/or to be reinstated as the women's basketball coach for Pasadena City College. The violation that was brought to me on February 17th, bylaw 211-2B speaks of subsidizing inducements and special privileges. This relates to a player who had an unstable living environment situation in early February. She needed to find a new residence and plan on staying in the hotel across the street. She needed a couple of days to work on securing a new place to stay, and in two days from that point in time, she would be leaving to attend a funeral in the southern part of the United States. Unfortunately, her credit card was denied and not accepted at the motel. At that point, she had no place to stay except for the streets of Pasadena. Carrying two bags and clothes in her own backpack, she contacted me for help, and in an effort to keep her safe, I did pay for her two nights in the hotel. I would have done that for your daughter. I'm not thinking of a violation at that time, I'm thinking of a young lady being safe. That's not from this area. The rule was written for coaches who house players in their house, who pay for their rent. That's what that rule is for. It's not for a situation that I was involved in. I was told there was at least four schools in the Western State Conference that are on probation. Each one of those coaches are still coaching. In this case, it seems I've been presumed guilty by association, but I haven't broken any bylaw. However, I took it upon myself to merely apologize to the coach at LA Valley, the player, athletic director, president, and both commissioners, along with PCC administration, for any damages that may have occurred. The punishment that I have been given does not fit the infractions. In 20 years, this is my only infraction.
Coach, your time is almost up.
And never has I been, has any coach in the state been suspended for one year. Thank you.
(Applause). Judith Espinoza, followed by Pastor Ed Smith.
Good evening. My name is Judith Espinoza, and I am currently the team captain of the PCC women's basketball team. A team is much like a puzzle. Each piece is just as important as the other, whether it be a center or corner piece. Without every single piece coming together, we are incomplete and unsuccessful. You can spend time trying to make another piece fit into our puzzle, but at some point, one must realize that they are not made to be placed somewhere where they do not... There is no replacing a puzzle piece. Coach Joe Perone is not only part of our puzzle, but also our keeper, making sure we are always in excellent condition. Coach Joe Perone brought us women together, piece by piece, to make a successful unit. The PCC women's basketball team is extremely displeased with this unfair and immoral removal of our head coach and leader. We have been informed with all of the details related to this decision and did not come into terms with it. The administration claims to want to protect the women's basketball program, but does not realize that they are, in fact, hurting and diminishing our team. Coach Joe Perone has coached for an outstanding 20 years, has successfully won a state championship, and sent a number of women off to universities to not only further their education, but their basketball careers as well. We want a leader and an educator to guide us in the right direction, not only on the court, but in life as well. We ask for our leader to be reinstated to his rightful position as head coach of the PCC women's basketball team. As his loyal players, we follow our leader and coach. Thank you for your time.
(Applause). Pastor Ed Smith, followed by Ashley Campbell.
Ed Smith?
Yes. Pastor Ed Smith, yes.
Hi, I'm Pastor Ed Smith. I've been knowing Joe Perone for probably well over 25 years as his pastor, working with our youth ministry. I recently honored him as one of the fathers in our church who works with youth. At one time, he had one of the basketball students that worked with him just really share about the integrity, his support, and really help out in how he lived his life and how it impacted her life. And I would just like to, very similar to what you saw with Mr. Perone, you saw a man of integrity, a man that has a heart, a man that walks upright. I reminded of a story, in fact, I shared recently in our church, about Daniel, in the Book of Daniel, and how he was unjustly accused. In fact, a law was written just to get at him. And when the king signed the law, he realized that he had put Daniel in the lion's den, and he lived. And when he found out that he was coerced, in fact, and tricked to sign a law that he realized would do damage to one of his friends, he changed his mind. He felt sorry about it. My question to you, what if Daniel would have been killed by the lions, simply by believing people who put together charges and a law that wasn't even right? So I would also ask you to re-investigate and reinstate Joe Perone. Thank you.
Thank you. (Applause). Ashley Campbell, followed by Lev N. Ross.
Hello, my name is Ashley Campbell, and I am an alumni of the Pasadena City College Women's Basketball Team of 2001 to 2003s. I want you guys to take a good look at my children because I know for a fact, if this man was not in my life, they would not be here. He was more than just a coach. I came into Pasadena City College from a broken home. Father has passed away, mother was ill, and that was my lifeline. That's where I came to get taught discipline. That's where I came to learn integrity. That's where I came to learn hard work and not to give up. And, no, he didn't pay for a hotel room for me when I was, didn't have a place to stay. But one thing he did do is, when I was wrong, he would tell me when I was wrong, which taught me life lessons. I came in 2001 and thought I was, you know, grown. And one thing that happened, I missed a practice before the playoff game, and I had to run about 200 laps just to get back on the basketball team. And I had a choice. I could have given up. I could have said, you know, "I don't want to play anymore." But I know that, through that, he taught me life. He taught me life's lesson. And it was in the middle of the summer, I ran all day for about an hour, you know, trying to complete these laps each day, just to get back on the team next year. And that taught me something that brought me to a place in myself to not give up in life and has made me stronger for my children. I would want him in my children's life. I've told them about this college. I've told them what I've learned. I've told them the discipline that I gained from this team and from this school, the integrity behind this school. I stand behind it. And if he's removed, you guys are losing not just a coach, you guys are losing somebody that is changing the community and the lives of many people that are coming up. And I just hope that you guys will look at what's been done, because there's people out here that are doing worse. There's people that deserve to be fired, deserve to be removed. And he is a man that's always showed integrity. And I just want you to really look at that and reinstate him back as a coach for as many years as you possibly can, because he's an asset to this school and to this community. That's it. (Applause).
Hello. So I'm Lev Ross. Am I timed? Time, three minutes, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, I came with the intentions of just sitting down and just coming in support of Joe Perone. But I believe in my heart that he is worthy of being stood up for. So I decided today to write something and just to speak from the heart. So, speaking for myself, I grew up poverty-stricken environment, South Central LA. I became victim of gang violence. I had no father in my home. My family was broken. I was a victim of the childcare system. I moved to relatives' house, auntie and uncle, and they then instilled laws and principles in me to pursue education, higher education. I pursued track. Track got me a scholarship to Cal State Los Angeles, and from Cal State Los Angeles, I got recruited to USC, where I'm currently attending an MFA in acting. So I have hopes of one day instilling in my community better values as I see Coach Perone does, with the people he encounters. I grew up with an ambition to run track, never having a good coach. Of course, I feel like I fell victim to a lot of the things I fell victim to because I didn't have any positive role models in my life. Now, just growing up that way, whenever I see a good coach now, whenever I see a good mentor now, whenever I see a good leader now, it's evident. And I can't help but to cling to that individual, because I've never had it. I feel like Coach Joe Perone is somebody who's a leader, he's a man of integrity, and he's beneficial to every single young adult he encounters. I met, this is the part I wrote, "I met Coach Joe at church. Fortunately, our relationship has extended beyond religion. Getting to know him on a more interpersonal level, his actions have spoken louder than any words can. He has been a loving, positive role model in the way he supports aspiring world leaders towards positive legal endeavors and in the way he loves his family. I've known him to be a man that clings..."
I was a victim of the childcare system. Um, um, I moved to a relative's house, auntie and uncle, and, 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 and they then, they then instilled, you know, the laws and principles in me to pursue education, higher education. I, I pursued track. Uh, track got me a scholarship to Los, Cal State Los Angeles. And from Cal State Los Angeles, I got recruited to USC where I'm currently attending, attending an MFA in acting. Um, um, so I, I have hopes of one day instilling in my community be- better values as I see Coach Perron does, uh, with the people he, he encounters. Um, I grew up within, within ambition to run track, never having a good coach. Um, of course, I, I feel like I fell victim to a lot of the things I fell victim to because I didn't have any positive role models in my life. Now, just growing up that way, whenever I see a good coach now, whenever I see a good mentor now, whenever I see a good leader now, it's evident. And I can't help but to cling to that individual because I've never had it. I feel like Coach Joe Perron is somebody who's a leader. He's somebody, he's a man of integrity. And, and he's beneficial to every single young adult he encounters. Um, I met, this is the part I wrote, "I met Coach Joe at church. Fortunately, our relationship has extended beyond religion. Getting to know him on a more interpersonal level, his actions have spoken louder than any words can. He has been a loving, positive role model in the way he supports aspiring world leaders towards positive legal endeavors. And in the way he loves his family. I've known him to be a man that clings to what is morally right and shuns what is immoral. He'd, he is a vital asset, not only to the women's basketball team, but also to every single young adult he encounters."
Thank you. President Brown, we have one more comment not on the agenda on another topic, and that is Paul Jarrell.
President Miller, what a year, huh?
Yeah.
I just wanted to take the time to thank you for your leadership over the past year. I know it wasn't as long in this capacity as you wanted, but I feel you'll continue on and I look forward to being there with you. I trust the Board's judgment in our new president. Look forward to working with him as well, but just wanted to thank you and you've been a good leader, a good mentor, a good friend to me, and so I appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you.
President Brown, that concludes the comments not on the agenda items.
Thank you, Dr. Miller.
Um, so I, on behalf of the Board and certainly myself, I want to thank the community for the comments regarding this very serious matter. Uh, I'd like to ask Dr. Bell to respond to the general situation and then the Board can perhaps have some points after that.
Okay, well, thank you, Dr. Miller. Members of the Board, ladies and gentlemen in the audience, let me start by saying I also appreciate your being here and I appreciate your, your comments about Coach Perron. I'm going to keep this brief and I'm going to keep it specific to the rationale that came before me because when you say administration, um, I am the person at the college to whom the intercollegiate athletic program reports. There is a number of things which have been articulated this evening, which obviously, well, maybe it isn't obvious to you, I was not aware of at the point the decision was made. The information that several people have said that they have secured and gleaned from the commission is different than the information I gleaned from the commissioner in writing and in conversation with him. So obviously there is a separation. Uh, so that's, the decision was made based upon the information, the best information that was at hand before the administration at the time it was made. Uh, the opinions differ, again, from what I've heard, the commission said, and what I know I heard and what I said, and which grounded my recommendation. And, um, so without going into great detail, for a lot of reasons, I don't think I can do that, uh, that was the grounding rationale for which the decision was made. And beyond that, I'll note it's a great marketing ad, Dr. Miller.
Thank you, Dr. Bell. So, thank you all for coming. So now we will, yes.
Um, I, I think this deserves more than just what has been dealt with thus far. And I, I'd like to have a more complete review of the matter. It, um, I, again, I'll pretend to be an expert with respect to what the commissioner may or may not do, but, um, there seem to be some differences in what the facts are as to what really occurred. I'd like to have more of a thorough investigation of this and a report back. And to the public as to what happened here and, uh, perhaps there is some way to, um, cut back on the severity of the, of the sanction that was issued. I don't know that, but I'd like to be open to.
Thank you, Doc. Are you done?
Yes.
So, thank you, Mr. Thompson. So again, we will, I think what Dr. Bell mentioned is that he will review the information that was presented here tonight, and it is into his hands. So we know that he will do what he needs to do. Thank you. Okay, so we are now going to turn to approval of minutes from June 3rd. Do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Do we, a motion by trustee Mann?
Yes.
And a second by whom?
No.
Do we have a second?
Second.
You can.
Second, you wasn't here.
Second, the motion.
She can.
Second, you wasn't here.
Okay, so we have a second by our new student trustee. I'll have to get used to your name, but, okay.
Justee Vaughn.
Justee Vaughn. Okay, so, um, all in favor or are there any amendments or all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, minutes pass with one. You weren't here, right?
I can still approve it.
Okay, so. Okay, so minutes have been approved unanimously. Okay, now we're going to move in our consent items. Do we have any of our trustees that have a consent item that would like to be pulled for discussion? If not?
Move approval of consent items.
Thank you, Dr. Mann. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
We have a second by trustee Wa. All in favor for approval of all the consent items, say aye.
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 Advisory vote?
Aye.
Good. All in favor, so, motion carry with the approval of all, including advisory vote. Thank you. We're getting ready there. Oh, yeah, thank you. Now we have to, thank you, Dr. Miller. We have something we need to read.
So I am very pleased tonight to announce that the Board has approved the hiring of three new faculty members, uh, as well as two administrators. I'd like to read the faculty members if I may please. Jennifer Koontz, psychology instructor, School of Humanities and Social Sciences. Liliana Martinez, high, adult high school diploma and English instructor in the non-credit division. And Christopher O'Leary, a photography instructor in the School of Visual Media and Performing Arts. These are three extremely well-qualified faculty and we welcome them to, to our college. And, and they among with approximately 32 other faculty will be introduced by Dr. Verding in the fall. In addition to that, the Board took action tonight to approve the hiring of two new administrators. Uh, actually, one is in the acting capacity, Leopoldo Viallos, acting coordinator, educational talent search program, student affairs. And then we are very pleased to announce Susan Bricker has been appointed as our new Director of Missions and Records in the Missions and Records Office.
Okay, with the approval of our consent items, now we will go to action items and we are going to move out, move up item H so that we know a lot of folks are here, ready to talk and we're ready to listen.
So if I may, very quickly, this is the authorization to expand Measure P funds. Uh, and I noticed some public comment on this and then after that, Mr. Smith will be doing a brief presentation to update the Board on actions that took place between the last board meeting and this board meeting, in particular relative to the sculpture and ceramics program needs.
Okay, Dr. Mann? Yes, we have nine, I'm sorry, eight cards for comment on this item. The first is Barbara Foring, followed by Yolanda McKay.
Thank you very much for hearing us. I was unfortunately ill at the last meeting and so wasn't able to attend the wonderful presentation that you saw, but I did want to make sure that I was here this evening to show my commitment and support to this. We really need, you all know me, so I could talk for hours, but I know I have three minutes and I'll do it in less. We need this. We, we need this. Our community needs this. Our students need this. We need to get into the, um, the 20th century, let alone the 21st century, with the facilities, the equipment, the program improvements that are so desperately needed by our students and faculty. So, um, I very much appreciate your consideration. I hope you really take to heart the presentation, the work that was involved the last time that you heard the information and that you listen again to the speakers that are going to be advocating for support tonight. They are from our advisory boards, they are the community industry leaders that work with our students, that hire our students, and that are there to then prepare dental health care for all of us. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Yolanda McKay followed by Thomas Hunzucker.
Hello, I'm Yolanda McCain. I teach sculpture. You might remember me from the last board meeting. And I wanted to say thank you to everybody involved here, that we had a very productive meeting with the administration and facilities and Pacific Design Group last Wednesday, the 11th. And I hope that you will be in support of the solutions that we have come up with, but I did want to say thank you. It's been a very difficult two years for our program and I hope that the school will take into consideration that some of our enrollment has dropped due to the fire marshal requiring us to lower our class cap from 24 to 17. And because of our facilities, we have lost some students, but hopefully that that will all change with the new facilities that we're to gain. Thank you.
Thank you. Thomas Hunzucker followed by Sylvia Talaka, Talaka?
I'm a resident of the district and adjunct instructor of figure sculpture here at PCC. Although I've been somewhat vocal in the past in pointing out that sculpture, ceramics, and printmaking were ignored in the implementation of the master plan establishing the Center for the Arts, it is with gratitude that I congratulate President Miller, Senior Vice President Bell, Executive Director Smith, Dean Arnwein and Dean Futner on the plan outlined in the packet presented to you tonight. It's clear that the administration of the college has carefully considered our students' need for a safe, clean, and properly equipped environment that honors the vision of the center that combines all of the arts in one place to the extent possible under current conditions. While like every other program at the college, our areas will not receive everything we could have dreamed of, that which we will receive is considerable and much appreciated. The plan provides sculpture with twice as much space, properly air-conditioned, heated and ventilated, with clean areas for modeling and discreet areas for processing woodworking, metalworking, and plaster handling, adjacent to the departmental woodshop and the Center for the Arts, as well as an efficient space for a new foundry in an appropriate area adjacent to the Z Building. Available studio space for ceramics will double as well, allowing that discipline to expand into new areas and processes. New storage spaces are provided that will for, that will be forklift accessible and available to all programs without taking up instructional space. Printmaking facilities will be modified and made more efficient in the art building with an eventual goal of integrating that discipline more closely with the other arts areas centered around the CA Building. I'm sure all of us look forward to working with the administration and the planning architects to realize these plans as soon as possible. Finally, I want to thank President Brown and the rest of the Board for making the needs of our students in the sculptures, ceramics, and printmaking areas a priority while funds remain in the coffers under Measure P. It would have been a great loss to our students, our programs, and the unparalleled reputation of our college if these programs had to wait for the next master plan and bond initiative. I thank you all sincerely.
Thank you. Sylvia Talak followed by Lyman Chafee.
Uh, my name is Sylvia Talawick. I'm a math instructor and a chair, the chair of the Math Center Committee. In late 2011, the Basic Skills Task Force was created. In early 2012, the Math Division held a Basic Skills Summit where Dr. Miller talked about the need for BOB math. Now, if you're asking what BOB math is, um, it's a path designed for students who struggle with math and who are not planning on majoring in a field that requires the rigors that our traditional math courses require. Um, the Math Department began to reinvent a part of itself by creating a second path for non-STEM students majoring in the social studies and the liberal arts. Uh, we have dedicated countless hours and developed new curriculum as well as designed a space that will best serve all of our approximately 8,500 math students. The Math Center project has been presented to all of the leaders of our college, beginning with Dr. Miller and Dr. Bell. Dr. Rocha was presented with the plans for the Math Center at a cabinet meeting in February of 2013. In the fall of 2013, sorry, yeah, 2013, the proposal was presented to the executive committee by Ruben Smith and the Board approved the use of Measure P money for the Math Center. Central to the success of both of our paths is a Math Center that can facilitate innovative instruction as well as support every math student with adequate tutoring, convenient access to counseling, computer software, group study rooms, and access to full and part-time instructor office hours. Students who have struggled with the traditional mathematics pathways need an inviting and practical location to work in Congress with each other and their professors as well as tutors. This collaboration is what creates learning communities. The Math Center will centralize math resources, resources, including the merging of programs such as Math Path and the Math Resource Center. It will also provide a central location for workshops. Additionally, the Center can help support the college by providing a location to hold professional development and help the college meet growth by potentially generating 143 ADAs for tutoring services provided alone. Um, and that's outside of the four classrooms. The Math Center is currently under construction and 11 faculty members, as well as the MRC program, have been relocated to a swing space and are awaiting its completion. The Math Center is currently, um...
Your time is almost up.
Thank you. Um, okay then, thank you very much. I thank you not only for the four years that the Math Committee has put into this program, but all of the years that we have needed something like this for our students.
Thank you. Lyman Chafee followed by Michael Cranfield.
So I'm also from the Math Division and I'm here to voice my support for allocations of funds to finishing the complete, the completion of the Math Center, as was addressed by Sylvia Talawick. Um, I think one thing she shouldn't mention is that the new programs that we have developed, the new curriculum that we've developed in the Math Department is really founded upon the principle of collaborative investigative study of mathematics. And we need a place where the students who don't live on campus, this being a community college, can find one common place where they can find one another to do their work. You can sort of, it's like a singles bar for math. So, they all know what they're there for.
Exactly.
And it's all good. So, I, I am only one of the 40 or so math professors in the division, but I feel that we, I speak for all of us when I say that we are 100% behind the completion of the Math Center. We need it, our students need it, it's a good thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Michael Cranfield followed by Kurt Tinnison.
My name is Michael Cranfield and I am the Architecture Faculty Coordinator in the Department of Visual Media and Performing Arts. I am here tonight to lend my enthusiastic support for the ongoing planning effort to reorganize the V Building, of which architecture is a part, under Measure P. I come to this process with 30 years of combined experience as an architectural educator and design practitioner. I know well the obligations in maintaining and developing a curriculum and the importance in ensuring the maintenance of the school's accreditation. Having been a design director at several architectural firms here in Los Angeles with a focus on higher education, I know the imminent importance of maintaining a good-faith collaborative partnership between all the varied constituencies in the design process. I feel confident that the Architecture Division will be able to partner with the other constituencies in the design process to produce an outcome that will both serve the needs of the architecture program and, through efficiencies that we will create, produce an outcome that respects and supports beneficial results for all the faculties and students who will share the V Building. I have already had the opportunity to walk the spaces... the spaces proposed for architecture within the V Building with Executive Director of Financial, I mean, Executive Director of Facilities, Ruben Smith, that is equal parity of footprint available relative to our existing footprint to fulfill the needs of architecture. Hopefully, the reorganization of our spaces will produce economies that can be given back to the larger community. Importantly, this process will allow the Architecture Department to reappoint, modernize, and reorganize our space in a way that reflects both current and future needs. Architectural education and practice have changed since the equipment for our labs were laid out. Our curriculum already addresses the increased focus on 20th-century computer-aided design, and yet our space allotments internally favor hand drawing. By combining these labs with the same type of equipment being currently used in the Fine Arts Building, we will be able to flexibly teach computer-aided design and hand drawing in the same space. This will produce space efficiencies that can be handed on in the V Building.
Your time is almost up.
Okay. Today as well, architectural programs are required by accreditation to do collaborative team design work. Our new studio labs can be appointed with lighter-weight tables and rolling pin-up surfaces that will allow students to arrange their teamwork space in a flexible way from class to class. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Kurt Tennyson followed by Carrie Starbird.
Thank you. I was here at the last meeting, and I just want to speak one more time because we had kind of a special event we did. And that is, I saw the need with implant dentistry and digital dentistry to take Nita Bobic and her professors and students to, the Southern California Aussie Integration Study Club in Redondo Beach meets at a hotel on a quarterly basis. And Dr. Roy Yonasi started this study club 30 years ago. So, Professor Branemark, who is an orthopedic surgeon, came to UCLA when I was there and taught us how to put the first dental implant in, in the mid-1980s. So, we now are celebrating 30 years. So, you know, I said to them, "You're only 30 years behind in your education." So, it's truth. But I think what started this with the instructors at the colleges, because I'm also over at Los Angeles City College, is that our National Board of Certification decided to make implant dentistry another specialty that you can take. And once they say you need to teach that, then the schools are now reacting. So, now's the time to, you know, I say, put the funds towards dentistry so that we can expand it and update it and upgrade it. You've had a wonderful school. This is one of my favorite schools. Well-taught, we get great students as a lab owner. I was at UCLA from '77 to '89. I left and started my own laboratory in Simi Valley in Ventura County. And, you know, I like what they do here. I like how they teach. The other thing is with that study club, the implant study club, Dr. Yonasi has invited them back. He liked them so much that he only charged the students and faculty $25 to cover lunch. I pay a lot more than that as a business owner. It's $400 a year for me. But, you know, that's, you know, he would like to see them learn more about what we're doing with digital dentistry. And I think they had a good experience at that Friday meeting after our last board meeting. So, if, I know the board said they'd like to do a site visitation. Mark said he didn't put his name down tonight because he didn't know he could speak, but, Mark, raise your hand. Mark has what I call Disneyland. He's got Disneyland of CAD/CAM toys and digital things. I took my Tennyson Study Club out there to see his place, and it's just simply amazing what he can do with digital dentistry.
I'm sorry, but your time is almost up.
Okay, thank you. I'm just wrapping it up.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So, take that opportunity. But I'd like to see a vote in a positive way tonight. I know we had three members ready last time, and I'd like to see something happen for the dental program tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Carrie Starbird.
Good evening, members of the Board of Trustees, fellow managers, faculty, staff, and students. My name is Carrie Starbird, and I am the Interim Associate Dean of Science and Math. I'm here today to advocate for the approval of the Measure P funds that are currently needed to complete existing projects, and specifically, I am here to ask for your support to increase the funding for the Math Resource Center by an additional $806,000. Historically, the Math Resource Center has been a place where computer-aided math classes were offered and where students could go to get tutoring, specifically for math. But as the demand for classes has continued to increase, and we have met that demand with more sections, we're offering approximately 280 sections of math and statistics this fall, serving over 8,500 students. We have remained confined to a single computer lab that is used to offer innovative math classes, and we have 525-square-foot tutoring center. Let me reiterate that number. 525 square feet, roughly the size of an average one-bedroom apartment, is being used to offer tutoring support for over one-third of our student body. In addition, over the past four years, the mathematics faculty have worked incredibly hard to create curriculum to meet the needs of our basic skills students that are not planning to major in STEM area. This new curriculum integrates important life skills, such as investing in the stock market, understanding credit card debt, and comparing mortgages. This new curriculum puts a heavy emphasis on using computer software to work smarter, not harder, to do many of these tedious calculations. But finding computer lab time has been a hindrance to offering too many of these sections. The STEM students also benefit from our curriculum redesign efforts. We're trying many new innovative approaches to help students become college-ready in one semester. This oftentimes involves using software to assess where students have holes in their mathematical understanding, or have cohorts of students in a series of classes where they can create a community of learners. Having a welcoming space where students feel comfortable to devote hours of their lives to understanding math is imperative to our overall student success. Renovation has already started for a new Math Center, using $500,000 of previously-approved funds. The additional $806,000 will be used to complete the project, which will directly benefit students by offering more space for access to full and part-time faculty, adding state-of-the-art, flexible classrooms that can be used as computer labs, or converted to regular desks for lecture-type classes and by increasing tutoring space. Finally, I would like to acknowledge all the faculty and staff from the Mathematics and Computer Science Department that are here tonight in support of these funds for the Math Resource Center. If I could get all of them to stand up and be acknowledged? These are just some of the 42 full-time faculty and 95 part-time faculty that we have in the Department of Math and Computer Science.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Thank you for your time.
I'm sorry. That concludes, that concludes the comment.
Yeah, so, let me ask the board's pleasure here. Ruben, I think if you were to start, well, actually, on the PowerPoint presentation that you have, on page four of the presentation, there's a financial recap. So, we'll bring that up quickly. And I want to show what the numbers are associated with this. And then, if the board so pleases, we can just go to the Sculpture and Ceramics part of Ruben's presentation, since at the last meeting, we went over the other programs, if that's okay with the board. Okay, that'll be a bit more efficient with people's time.
My preference would be to have the full report, so we can put it in context.
Okay. So, if that's the pleasure of the board, then we'll go ahead and do the full report, which is much of what we did last time.
Slide four is fine.
Okay. So, start on, we'll start on slide four. So, let me just do a quick recap when you get four up there, please. Okay. So, basically, what we're talking about here, tonight, we would like the board to take action to approve the funding that is noted on page four of this PowerPoint presentation. It speaks to the increased funding for the dental classroom expansion, $650,000 amount, increased funding for the Math Resource Center, $806,000. It's under item eight, it's under tab eight in the binders. H, I'm sorry, H is in heart.
Is this PowerPoint the same version that we have in here?
Yes. At least, at least this page is. There's a couple of extra slides that we'll show you at the end, dealing with this sculpture program. Increased funding for the classroom conversions for the E-Building Science Labs, $365,000. Authorized funding for additional restroom upgrades in D and GM Buildings, $354,000. Authorized funding for elevator upgrades at the Community Education Center, $71,000. And then, the major new addition is the increased funding for the expansion of the Arts Program, which has secondary impact on a variety of other programs in the V Building, and that's roughly $900,000. And that's on top of $500,000 that had been approved previously.
Correct.
So, in total, on page four, you'll see that we are asking for authorization for $3126,000, it looks like.
Forty-six.
Right. The total authorization request is $3146,000 if you look on page five. So, within the holding account now, we have $4.4 million. You subtract this authorization, we have a remaining balance of $1.25 million. That money would be held in reserve to resolve any, some of the pending legal actions that we are working through in the Center for the Arts. And to the extent that we do not use the money for those purposes, we will back to you with infrastructure projects. So, you're looking for, we're looking for approval for $3.1 million.
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Miller. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to bring this item back to you for action tonight. I think that there was a lot of positive comments looking at these projects, so I won't go too far into detail on those. Just a quick recap, the dental expansion will be a total of $1 million. There was previously $350,000 allotted for that in the fall of 2013. We'll add additional $650,000 to that project to complete the needs and improvements in, to all three of those dental programs. The Math Resource Center will come to a total of $1.3 million, with the $500,000 previously allocated, with an addition of $806,000 to improve that space, which is four classrooms and the Math Resource Center. The Geo Sciences, the School of, also School of Science and Mathematics, E-Building Labs, that one was originally budgeted $450,000. We're going to go to a total of $815,000 with an addition of $365,000 to complete that, that project improvement on the first floor of the E-Building. The campus-wide reconstruction improvements is upgrades for the restrooms, $354,000. Elevator upgrades at the CEC Site, Community Education Center, $71,000. And then, the newest slides are School of Visual Media and Performing Arts, Sculpture and Ceramics, Printmaking, and Scene Shop. Although we came back with this presentation to address the needs for sculpture, ceramics, and printmaking, we also wanted to consider other programs that were impacted from the value engineering decisions that were completed in 2008. Printmaking will actually be, will stay in the R Building on the fifth floor. We're going to provide an expansion in that space, which is adequate with, for the space required for lecture and lab or studio. We're also going to relocate the Scene Shop. The Scene Shop is currently in a location that's inaccessible to many. It is a very unsafe condition when carrying equipment up and down to the second floor. There's no elevator access or any system to support those needs, so it's a potential safety hazard. By changing the location of that and taking the Theater Scene Shop to the first floor of the Victor Building, V Building, we have an opportunity to continue servicing the Sex and Auditorium, as well as the new little theater in the Center for the Arts Building. There was some growth. That was previously discussed. The exact growth for the Ceramics Program, we're looking to expand the ceramics in the existing Z Building. They will take over space that is currently occupied by the Sculpture Program. We're going to remove the sculpture space and repurpose it for ceramics. That's 185% increase. The benefit of that is, right now, there's 18 students. We can go to 24 students per section in that, in that space. Sculpture Programs are going to relocate to the V Building. Right now, they're currently at about 19 students per section. That will also go to 24 students per section. And we're also going to upgrade the patio, the foundry area, which will actually serve both sculpture and ceramics. And it will also be accessible by forklift in and out of storage, and it's going to best serve the students to take on some more innovation and take advantage of the 20th-century modernization of that space. Scene Shop will be relocated, as I talked about, in the Victor Building. And I'm actually going to show a slide that, of all of these spaces, though the plans are conceptual, we haven't drilled down to anything specific just yet, I'm actually going to show slides of that. There's going to be, there are obviously impacts. And Instructor Cranfield talked about the impacts that it's going to make on architecture, which is actually a positive impact. So, the Architecture Program will actually be relocated, and I'll actually show a slide of that as well. Several, the Teaching and Learning Center right now is actually occupied in several locations. We'd like to find one location of contiguous space for them to be occupied in one location opposed to three buildings that they're in right now. The Student Art Gallery will need to be relocated. The existing woodshop will also be, need to be relocated. And then, we are actually going to remove landscaping and walkways just west of the V Building to achieve the needs of growth for the Sculpture Program. There will also be some elimination of general-purpose classrooms, and we're going to have to go through as a district to create the efficiencies to make sure we absorb those changes. This is the fifth floor. What you see highlighted in blue, I know it's really difficult to see what's there for the audience, but what you're looking at, if you're looking at the R Building on the west side, which is actually to your left, that's 523 is the furthest, the building, room furthest south on that document, I mean, I'm sorry, on this slide. That's the current space of the Printmaking. Printmaking also uses a classroom laboratory, which is room 520. We're going to combine those spaces, and we're going to create better use of that space opposed, and efficiencies opposed to the students have to walk around the exterior of the building. We're going to create interior access between those two spaces and increase the flexibility there. This is the Z Building. What we're going to do for Sculpture, I'm sorry, is Sculpture is currently occupied in V, I'm sorry, Z 103. That's going to actually be repurposed, and that's going to grow, Ceramics is going to grow into that space by removing a portion of that wall. How much of that wall, what that's going to look like, we're not sure yet. That's going to require a structural review, because it is a low-bearing wall. We're going to actually make some changes there that work for that program. But conceptually, the instruction, the instructors agree to that. The blue area is the foundry area. That is the patio. We're going to actually cover that patio. We're actually going to provide electronic kilns there and some other equipment that supports that program. And just to the south of the Z Building, we're actually going to provide storage. This is the V Building. There's several spaces that are going to change here. There's going to be the addition of an exterior modular to the west side of the V Building, which is the furthest building, blue to the left. Sculpture and ceramic, I'm sorry, Sculpture and the Woodshop will occupy V 108 and 110. Then, we also have TLC that's actually going to have to, their space is going to change from the second floor to the first floor. We're relocating the gallery to the furthest blue area at the northeast end of the first floor. And then, we also have the Scene Shop there. The second floor, this blue area is going to be the new architecture space. That concludes the shorter presentation, short presentation of what I've talked about at the last board meeting. I think that all have been, we've actually reached out to every program that is actually impacted by this. We are working with them to make sure we're addressing all of the needs of those spaces, that the students aren't losing any opportunities for growth and development and learning. We're going to make sure that we have the minimum... We're going to make sure that we have the minimal impact during the fall terms. We're going to schedule this around peak periods for each one of those programs. So, construction may not start till late spring of next year if this, if this is approved, but we're going to develop timelines, and we're going to make sure that we, we communicate and work through each one of those groups to find out when the best times is to make these changes.
Great. Okay, Board, do you have any questions? Go ahead, Justee Wong.
May I just have a comment? I, I wasn't here at the last meeting, but I, as I read through this board package, I could see how important it was to so many people. So, I did go back and I looked at the video, and I have to say, you know, I want to congratulate Administration. It was clear that you had done a lot of research, but also, just from hearing from the Board input, from the community and the students and the faculty at the last meeting, and then again tonight, that there was some good listening that happened, and I think this is a good example of the convergence of good investigation and research, as well as listening to the needs of what the community needs. And I think that it's a lot of hard work that went into coming up with some good common solutions, so I want to congratulate you.
Thank you. I have a very good team.
Okay, we have Justee Thompson.
For the purpose of all of us, the public and ourselves included, what are you asking us to do?
So, as I indicated on page four, we are asking you to approve the projects noted. The Dental, the Math Resource Center, the E-Building Classroom conversions and Lab, and Lab conversions, the restroom upgrades, the elevator upgrade, and then, finally, the funding for the expansion of the Arts Program, and specifically, to resolve the Sculpture and Ceramics Program needs. So, the total of that is $3,146,000 worth of requests.
Yes.
This money would come out of the Measure P Holding Account. Currently, there is $4,399,919 in that account. If the Board approves these projects, that would leave us with a balance of $1,253,919, approximately. And that would be used, we would hold that in reserve to deal with some outs, to potentially deal with some outstanding issues vis-à-vis the Center for the Arts from a legal perspective, and/or for infrastructure projects.
Okay. The presentation, though, I think dealt with a lot of other, I guess, potential projects with quite significant amounts of money attached to them. It would go far beyond, I think, the 1.253919 that's left over.
No, actually, Trustee Thompson, and I apologize for that it wasn't clear. What Executive Director Smith was doing was describing those things that will happen within the body of these, of these expenditures. So, everything that's in this presentation is wrapped up in this funding request. He was, as at the last meeting and tonight, he was just being descriptive of what, of what each one of those requests represented.
Any other questions? If not, do I have a motion?
I move to approve.
I'm sorry.
Question.
Okay, there's a question over here.
Right. How does the square footage for the Architecture Program compare, under this proposal, to what it has now?
Again, there, the proposal is conceptual. We're just looking at like-for-like spaces and developing plans to meet the needs. Right now, they have just about 4,000 square feet. That includes some interior offices on the first floor, and then, we have some other unusable space. We're looking to come back, and we're proposing anywhere from 2,900 to 3,400, 3,500 square feet of space. With the combined, with using flexible furniture and combining two of those spaces, we're actually becoming far more efficient. What we have right now with, within one of those programs is a computer lab. That computer lab seats 18 students. That computer lab is very small, as Instructor Cranfield stated, and we have a hand-drawing lab that is very large, and is actually typically unoccupied. So, by combining both of those two spaces into one, you actually are finding, we're actually finding a way to better use the space, having multiple sections in one room, and you can actually lose that 900 to 1,000 square feet without having any impact on the program.
Thank you. I have an observation.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, my predecessor, Jeff Baum, a month or two before I came on the Board, along with his appointee to the Measure P Oversight Committee, recommended that, what they characterized as the excess money after having built out what they, I believe were characterizing as the main components of what was intended to be built under Measure P, that some of that excess money be returned to the taxpayers. Now, we can put aside how that would be done, it can be done and all that. They were not successful in convincing the Board to go that direction. But I've got a sort of legal technical question here. We're spending down, we're going down through this money, and I fully expect it will all be spent on new construction or renovation, all that. Is there anything that we could think of that would, that it would not be legal, that it would not be legal to spend the money on?
Well, in terms of what we're proposing to you?
Not, no, not just, I assume all this passes the test, is that right?
It does, yes.
Basically, we could spend this on painting walls and stuff, or...
Not on painting walls. We have to spend the money on projects that were broadly defined under the Measure P, and these projects all qualify. And also, and then, the impact, the secondary impact of the improvements that we do to create new space. So, for example, in order to provide...
Okay, I understand.
Okay.
But, so, from a practical standpoint, there's practically nothing we couldn't spend this money on.
Well, I don't want to say nothing, I, we have to do...
I said practically.
Well, I, I don't know if I really want to respond, yeah. Yeah, I guess salaries and things like that, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, Dr. Man.
Actually, I think there's several things we can't spend the money on. We couldn't spend it on athletic facilities, because we had had an athletic facility, and we took it out before we went on the bond. And if you go back and look at the language, it kind of defines what it, what it is, and again, I think it's kind of the ripple effect, the programs that were impacted by the buildings and the fact that we didn't get everything done, all those, that's exactly in line with my recollection of what was in there. But we can't spend it on, on just, on just anything, because all of us probably have some little pet projects we would like to, to look at. But I, I think athletic facilities would definitely not be appropriate.
Okay, so, we do have a motion to approve, and we need to look into it.
I'll second it.
And we have a second by, we have a motion by Trustee Wong, a second by Trustee Man.
Just one, one quick. Now, my understanding, just to be clear, is we're being asked to authorize the expenditure...
$3,146,000.
$3,146,000.
Yes.
Which leaves us with a balance of $1,253,919.
Yes, sir.
Very good.
Yes, sir. Just to be clear.
Advise revoked.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, motion carries unanimously. Woo, yeah! So, I want to thank Mr. Smith for an outstanding job. I know you were going around like a, probably a chicken with your head cut off. And for all the deans and everyone that worked together to put this to rest, now maybe we can move on with our lives. Good job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, now, we move on to, what is it? Our budget, I think it is.
Yes, so, as we set up now for our public hearing and adoption of the fiscal year 2015-16 tentative budget, we're going to do a...
Nobody has money over there, look at them.
I know, well, let's wait until people...
Send some my way.
Exactly.
Tonight, tonight, you need a cake.
Yeah, while, while we're, while we're setting up, I'll just say this about this.
The cake.
You know, Trustee Brown said what she said about the faculty, and I, the faculty voices are really quite incredible and very, very important, and I want to thank them all for that. But I also want to thank the Board, because...
No one is listening.
I know, but I want, this is for the Board. The Board needs to understand that dating back to 2000, when we did the Measure P, we shepherded through, you shepherded through amazing improvements to this campus over the years. And effectively, tonight, we're just about at the end of that 15-year or so journey. And we took 150 million, it was stretched to 173 million, got an incredible amount of value out of that dollar. And the next time that we start talking about something like this, will be when we have our new master plan available for the Board's consideration. Did I buy enough time with that?
Look at them, they're not listening to you.
Okay, so, why don't we go ahead and move on, if we may then? So, again, in the public hearing for the adoption of our fiscal year 2015-16 tentative budget, by law, we have to have this done by, actually, by June, by tonight, as I recall.
Can we have some order, so we could continue with our agenda? Thank you.
We need to have a tentative budget approved, so that the, we have spending authority for the new fiscal year, which begins July 1st, the new fiscal year being 2015-2016. So, tonight, we are going to bring forth to you a brief presentation, actually, two brief presentations. I will also say that Mr. Simon Esche, our Acting Senior VP and Assistant Superintendent for Business and College Services, has met with the Board Budget Committee, and I'm sure Trustee Selvage will speak to that when the time comes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Board, ladies and gentlemen. This is a quick presentation on the fiscal year 15-16 tentative budget, that is effective July 1st, 2015, and goes through June 30th, 2016. So, the purpose of this recommendation is to request approval for the fiscal year 15-16 tentative operating budget for the Pasadena area Community College District. The State of California's 15-16 budget has been approved by the Legislature. However, as of the date of this presentation submission, the state budget has not yet been approved by the Governor. The Governor has the ability to do line-item vetoes. Therefore, adjustments to this tentative budget, based on the Governor's approved 15-16 budget, will be reflected in the District's 15-16 final budget, which will be brought to you on September 2nd, 2015. Approval of this annual tentative budget must be received by the Chancellor's Office no later than June 30th of each fiscal year, and allows the District to conduct business and pay its operating obligations at the start of the 15-16 year, which is July 1st. So, to begin, these estimates that we're going to be talking about, and the numbers that we're going to be showing you, are effective as of May 31st, 2015. This slide is the estimated appropriations. Generally, the District receives from the State Chancellor's Office in mid to late May, the second-period report, or the P2 report. For various reasons, those reports have not been released yet. We've been told that they will be released either on June 25th or June 26th. When we get those reports, we'll be able to have a better or more concise dollar amount that we believe will roll over until next year as a beginning balance. But as of right now, we are estimating our beginning balance at $15,363,000. Our state and local revenue is estimated to be $144 million, federal $151,000, and state lottery funds about $2.9 million. So, the total 15-16 base revenue estimate is $147 million. The total 15-16 O1 general unrestricted fund balance and revenue is estimated to be $162,348,000, and that includes one-time dollars that we anticipate getting in fiscal year 15-16 as a backlog or a state mandate that the system as a whole will receive. This slide is showing the increase of the ongoing funds year-over-year, starting with fiscal year 13-14, and includes Proposition 30, based on the adopted budget for 13-14, 14-15, and the 15-16 tentative budget that we are showing you tonight. So, we had an increase...
Proposition 30, but just by way of clarification, is the Education Protection Act, the EPA.
Thank you. So, we had an increase of $143.8 million to $148 million to $162 million, which is a budget increase this year over last year of a combination of one-time dollars and ongoing dollars of about $14 million. The 15-16 estimated O1 fund new revenue breaks down in the following order. This is just a highlight of the major buckets that we anticipate receiving. The cost of living adjustment for the District is 1.02 percent, which translates into $1.2 million. Access and growth, there is a new growth formula for community colleges. Pasadena is restricted to a 2.51 percent growth. That translates into $2.7 million for us. Non-credit career development, college preparation, we anticipate $400,000 coming in from that increase for the CDCP rate. Operating costs, this is an increase in base apportionment, so the credit rate is anticipated to rise approximately, we estimate about $200, $230 per credit, and that translates into $5.1 million, based on our current FTES. There is also a new item in the state budget that will hopefully go through to state, I'm sorry, the Governor's signature, for full-time faculty. That translates into an estimate of $1.3 million for ongoing revenues. So, overall, we're, we are anticipating $10.9 million of ongoing revenue. One-time funds, the District's share of statewide K-14 mandate funds is a buildup over time of funding that will come in. Our portion, we are estimating of the bucket, is approximately 1.8 percent. That translates into roughly $11 million of one-time funds. So, here's our list of ongoing expenses. Our benefits for fiscal year 15-16 have increased moderately compared to last year. The highest rate increase was for our Anthem PPO policy coverage, which is the coverage that the majority of our employees and their families have. The initial rate increase was 18 percent, however, that amount was negotiated down to 12 percent. Throughout fiscal year 14-15, the District's Benefits Committee has been reviewing a variety of potential plan design changes that may reduce benefit costs, and during fiscal year 14-15, the faculty and management associations agreed to contribute to their health benefit costs. Any additional modifications will be subject to negotiations with the labor units. But currently, our estimate for benefits for Anthem PPO and Anthem HMO and Kaiser HMO is an increase of approximately $3.8 million for benefits. Our Calsters rate increased from 14-15 of 8.88 percent to 10.73 percent, which translates into a $1.2 million increase to the District. Calpers, we were expecting to be much higher than it actually turned out to be, but the rate went from 11.771 percent to 11.84 percent, which translates into about a $20,000 increase for us in fiscal year 15-16. Additional ongoing expenses are our fiscal year 15-16 Supplemental Early Retirement Program, or the SERP. That will cost us approximately $526,000 a year for five years. Reserves for salary increases, we've set aside $3.6 million for any expected increases for 15-16. Fiscal year 15-16 step-in column increases, about $1.1 million. Statewide Association of Community Colleges, or SWAC, the property and liability insurance increase may go up to, may go up another $135,000. We have not yet received the renewal on that, but that's our initial estimate. It actually may go down. Negotiated adjunct office hours increase is 500,000. And this is something new for us. The Affordable Care Act, healthcare coverage for hourly employees, this is the first year that the ACA component of healthcare coverage for hourly employees may go into effect. We're estimating this may cost us $2.1 million for the nine-month period that the coverage policy would be in place. Retiree benefits have gone up about $700,000, and actually, let me clarify that. We are increasing it by $700,000 to make sure that it is fully funded. Software license for multi-users, that has gone up 450,000, and actually, let me clarify that, too. That has been fully funded as well in fiscal year 15-16. Funding of new and previously frozen positions, we've set aside $1 million for that. So, we have an increase of approximately $15 million of ongoing expenses. This slide shows the one-time expenses. So, the $11.2 million that we expect to get in as K-14 state mandated funds, we are estimating that the breakdown will be in this order for various purposes that the District has. So, employer mandated costs, we're looking to set aside approximately 500,000 for Calsters and Calpers. We want to set it aside, so as those costs increase, we don't have a hit in each individual fiscal year. We are starting to set aside some savings for that. We are looking to refund some of the reserves for contingencies for 14-15 salary increases in the amount of 1.5 million. Our workers' compensation fund needs to be funded at 3.5 million. Excuse me. And that is because we had an audit adjustment in fiscal year 10-11, and we are correcting that in fiscal year 15-16 to make sure that the fund is funded, excuse me, correctly.
So, will this be fully funded, or just...
Will this be fully funded or just partial?
It'll still be partially funded. Other post-employment benefits, or GASB 43-45, we're setting aside $500,000 there. Also will not be fully funded, but we're making inroads to make sure that that does happen. Fund 29, capital servicing fund, set aside $350,000. Fund 41, replenishment for facilities and information technology, $950,000. Fund 63, dental coverage self-insurance fund, $130,000. Centennial facilities master plan, $463,000. And while we're in the middle of waiting for the P2 and the advanced apportionment report for fiscal year 15-16, we are, we are filling a gap that we currently have with one-time dollars. When we get the P2 report and the advanced apportionment report, we fully expect that if not all of these $3.4 million will be able to go back to one-time uses, if not all of it, at least a good portion of it. All right. So although we are asking for authorization tonight for Fund 1, we did want to highlight some of the other funds, the grant-related funds that we get. Student success and support program, or Triple SP, looks like there'll be about $1.8 million worth of increased funding for the district. Student equity, about $2 million. Career technical education, $864,000. Deferred maintenance and instructional equipment, $2.7 million. Basic skills and student outcomes, $1.1 million. Proposition 39, the energy efficiency fund, $696,000. An adult education AB86 grant award, about $3.2 million.
Does that have extra revenue that comes in with it?
I'm sorry?
Is that the last one?
Can you hear that out there still?
Is there additional?
We should've got champagne.
For the AB86 grant award?
That is the, that is the revenue.
That is what we requested as a grant. Yes.
Sorry.
All right. So just in closing, I do want to highlight something I said last year, I'd like to say again this year. From a fiscal perspective, the conversation needs to continue related to the efficiency of offerings. This is the best mechanism to ensure additional dollars to the district without adding to our mounting expenses. Academic and student affairs is aggressively pursuing a variety of enrollment management strategies to ensure efficiencies. So if we're able to ensure efficiencies by creating district-wide efficiencies, the costs that we have for ongoing needs, we can better balance in the future. Okay? So again, we will be bringing back to you on September 2nd, the adopted budget recommendation. And if you have any questions about the tentative budget, I'd be happy to answer.
So I want to bring to the board's attention that under tab G is the actual tentative budget document that we will be, we will be asking you to approve. It's a 12 or 14-page document that line item, by line item identifies the income and expense. Also want to say quickly that by far, this is the best budget the California community college system has seen in decades. It brings stability and it brings additional desperately needed funding. However, part of this presentation is also about to show that even though we were, the beneficiaries of such a large amount of ongoing money as well as one-time money, it's all already allocated. And I'm going to do a brief presentation in a second to speak to that. The other thing I wanted to point out is that there is reserves in this budget for potential, potential salary increases tied to 15-16. This does not presuppose anything. All of those things are subject to negotiations and discussion. And we just learned the hard way that if you don't reserve money for these types of things, down the road, sometimes you get caught. And we don't want to get caught like that again. So I just wanted, I just wanted to point that out. Also, you may have heard that today, the governor, actually, I guess it was yesterday, the governor did sign the budget. It was a compromise, and it brought everything back pretty much to the may revise. At 4:00 this afternoon, Joe and I and Diane received Dan Troy, who's a vice chancellor of fiscal and finance, his review of that. And we checked the new information against our information, and we were off about $1 million. It looks like we're off $1 million on the good side. So it looks like we might get an additional million. There's still trailer bills and trailer, trailer, trailer bills that are being negotiated. It may be many months before all of these, the allocation formulas and the approaches for these dollars may actually be clear. But we're confident that this, that this budget is reasonable. When we bring back the final budget to you on September 2nd to be adopted, then we'll have all the i's dotted and t's crossed as best we can at that point. So now, if there are questions, and then I'll do my efficiency PowerPoint if there are any questions about this.
Anyone have a question? No questions.
Okay, then I will, if we can bring up the next PowerPoint real quick. This will be very quick, folks. It is also in your binders. It's behind the first PowerPoint that you had. And it's labeled the 2015-16 tentative budget, what we call the efficiency gap. So just briefly, this is, these are just some graphical depictions of where we are. It's a year-to-year budget comparison between 14-15 and 15-16, and where the income comes from. So we have local dollars, property tax and other local dollars, and state revenue. And then we have reserves. And that brought us $148 million for 14-15. And then where we are for 15-16 at the moment, you can see the different dollar values there. So that's what our income looks like. Then, in terms of where the money goes, on the rights, on the right side, you see the 14-15 adopted. And in this pie chart, it shows the percentage of dollars, the amount of dollars that went to general places in the budget. Academic salaries, classified salaries, reserve, other, you see a very, very tiny amount of money going to supplies, a healthy amount going to benefits, $26.89 million. Other services, consultants and travel and utilities and what have you. And then a very, very small amount for capital outlay. And then you compare that to where we are going in 15-16, and you can see the slight adjustments. Now, the percentages, you have to remember that we're dealing with a higher dollar amount, so that's why some of the percentages may be slipping a little bit. But the actual dollar values are really quite, quite low in comparison to what goes into our personnel costs and what have you. So here, you see the-
Go back to that.
Sure.
Yeah, so I was looking at the, and I guess I'm just hopeful, not to the business end.
Use your microphones?
No, that's okay. No, yeah, it is, I am correct. So I'm looking at academic salaries. So is this, so is this going to put us in a better situation this year than it was the year before where we were?
It's a very good question, Trustee Brown, thank you. Basically, that's, this is a result of the SERP and the retirees. So you might recall that we had 34 faculty members take advantage of the SERP and one manager. And so as a result of that, our academic salaries are actually less by a percentage basis this year, but actually a little bit more on a dollar basis on the basis of the increases in salaries and what have you that we did. So that's, that's part of the answer for that. As you know, when senior faculty retire and we replace faculty, next year when we replace those faculty, they will likely come in at salaries that are lower than the senior faculty had, so there'll be a savings, an ongoing savings as a result of that.
Okay.
Okay. So here, this is just showing you where the ongoing and one-time monies are coming from. So the 1.21 million is basically from the COLA. The growth, the dollars that we will get represents 2.73 million. The CDCP, which is the funding of the career development, career, I always forget that last piece, either career development, career program, preparation, career preparation, noncredit. That now is going to get funded at the same credit rate, so we're estimating on the low side right now, $420,000. There's an increase in what they call operating costs, or $5.16 million. That's actually an increase in our funding base, our FTS base is going to go up from roughly $4,600 per FTS to something on the order of $4,850, give or take. That's what that increase is. And then, as Joe mentioned in his presentation, we are anticipating getting an additional $1.35 million from the state to help us fund our full-time faculty. And then we just have one-time funds of $11.27 million that are, that are coming in. So these are the cost drivers. And so I'm not going to repeat all of this, but this shows you where the money goes, again, graphically and by color coding, into healthcare, into CalSTRS, our, the ongoing SERP obligations that we have, step and column increases that are contractually required, retirement benefits. You can see graphically where the money goes. Those are the cost drivers. All right. So this is, this is the payoff slide here. Our average class size is about 27.1 right now. The data includes small classes such as nursing programs and other programs that are just by their nature require smaller classes. But it also includes large classes such as large group instruction, which helps balance that out. An increase in average class size will allow for savings to support other areas of the college. It's an important concept. If we, as an institution, can generate one additional student on average per class, that's an efficiency increase of about 3.7%, where we save approximately 704 FTS. But more importantly, we can use $1.17 million of the budget to fund other important things. If we go two students, you'll see that that goes up to 2.3 million. Three students, 3.5 million, and so on and so forth. Oops, that's not what I wanted to do. Uh-oh, where's the last slide, guys?
Where was it?
All right.
That's it?
In the presentation, now, there's one more slide, but I guess it didn't get there. Wrong PowerPoint. Let me just verbalize this then, because this is important. So, we're 27. How does that compare to our market basket colleges? And how does that compare to the LA schools, all of which are within striking distance of our college? Cerritos is the same as we are, but 27 students. Citrus is at 31.8. East LA, 36.6. El Camino, 31.2. Glendale, 23.6. LA City, 23 points, 30.9. LA Harbor, 30.5. LA Mission, 36.4. LA Pierce, 34.3. LA Southwest, 31.6. LA Trade Tech, 32.7. LA Valley, 33.4. Long Beach, 30. Mount SAC, 28.8. Pasadena, 27. Santa Monica, 30.3. West LA, 34.4. So the average among those schools are 30.3. We are at 27.1. There, they found the right presentation. Or thank you, Ryan. So there, there are the numbers in front of you. So the point is that if we were able to get our class size up, we would have money for a variety of things, such as more supplies, more college assistance, more professional development, more guest lecturers, more speakers. We'd also have additional money to deal with the fixed expenses that continue to go up, the employee mandated costs of STIRS, PER, social security, healthcare, what have you. So as an institution this year, we have a goal of getting more efficient. Because without that efficiency, we cannot fund these extra items that are so desperately needed, like instructional supplies and what I mentioned. So there is an efficiency gap. We have that gap in comparison with other colleges. The important thing on the comparison is that it's difficult to do apples-to-apples, but everybody's got the same anomalies. So if we actually did apples-to-apples, in likelihood, everybody would increase a little bit, but that gap would still be there. And that's what's important to note. So one, one student's worth 1.7, and et cetera. So in conclusion, I'm just going to say that it's a great budget. We're doing very well this year. I want to thank the staff for putting it together. But by no means does it mean that we're out of the woods, if you will. We also must start putting money away in reserves to fund those STIRS obligations, to fund that PERs obligations, to deal with our workers' comp. Our GASB, as Joe mentioned, is funded, but it's still probably 2 or 3 million under what it needs to be right now, and et cetera. So with that, I'll end it and-
I do have a question.
Yes.
So are we going to develop a plan on how to engage-
Yes, thank-
The faculty on this?
Yes, Trust-
This is very important.
Yes, Trustee Brown, we've, once I got on this kick about a month ago when I got into this, we brought together a group, enrollment management, that Dr. Scott is heading up. Dr. Scott will be working with the different faculty groups and meeting with the different faculty groups to be going to talk about this. It's been a topic of discussion at the dean's meetings for the last few weeks, as I recall. We are all actively engaged in this process. It is, some of it is subject to negotiation and discussion, so we're going to be doing that. But the answer is, is yes. And as you can see from this chart, other colleges are already doing it. And we just need to get better at it here at PCC.
Great, Trustee.
Right. I'd like to ask, ask a question and then make a couple observations on the basis of the meeting, of the recent meeting of the Budget and Audit Committee. My question is, we're going into the fiscal year with an expected reserve account in the range of $15.4 million. We showed adding a million and a half, but what is it that we expect the reserve, or what are we projecting for the reserve account balance at the end of the year coming?
So we are looking at our traditional $12,500,000 for our, what I call our lockbox reserves, which is done every year.
$12,500?
$12,500.
Oh, 50, okay.
And then on top of that, we have reserves for contingencies that we do come to the board if we ever need to tap into that for approval, but it's outside of that $12.5 million, and that is $3,77,000. Now, on top of that, we're looking to put us, to set aside out of the one-time dollars another 1.5 million. So that $3,77,000 should go up to $4.577.
Yeah. But I mean, we're talking about ending, what, in two weeks? Somewhere in the range of $15.4 million.
Correct.
We're going to add a million and a half.
Correct.
Right.
Well-
We're going to put a million and a half in, and everything else is going to be a wash?
Well, where we are right now, as we're waiting that, the P2 and the advanced apportionment, which we normally get, and that will tell us exactly where we'll be for year end for 14-15.
I'm just asking about the numbers we have now.
Yeah, okay, so the number you have-
The numbers we have now is the 15.3 or 4 beginning, plus a million and a half, that's where we'll be.
But the million and a half is 15-16 money that we get as the one-time.
Right. I would look at it a little differently-
Yeah, I'm talking about what the balance is going to be at the end of this coming fiscal year. We've got it, we've got a balance at the beginning, we're going to add a million and a half during the fiscal year.
I would look at it a little differently, Dr. Selvage. So the beginning balance, we're estimating it being $15.4 million.
Yes.
So we are setting aside in the budget for 15-16 our traditional dollar amounts, which is the $12,500,000 plus what will be the 4.5. So that is $16.5 million. If, if the tentative and the adopted budget kind of play out the way we think they're going to over the next three months, then we could safely, I believe, say that we would have a projected ending balance of about 16-something million dollars. So it's not quite the same thing.
Okay, yeah, well, that's what I saw. I just wanted confirmation on that. And a couple of general observations based on our meeting. One of them, and it's something I've been sort of tracking and been thinking about since I first saw the numbers a year or so ago, if you consider that we got a general fund budget in the range of $160 million, fully 10% of that comes from Prop 30. And this coming year, the Prop 30 money is going to peak at around $16 million. So, you know, it's, it's 10 or so percent of our total general fund from that one source. It built up for three years since this Prop 30 was passed, which was a combination of increased income tax and increased sales tax. It drops a year later, $14, $15 million and drops a little bit. And then it plummets three years out, and a year after that, it disappears. And I have no idea what they're going to do in Sacramento about maybe putting something else on the ballot, put another Prop 2, or Prop 30 Mark II on the ballot and see if they can, you know, get this thing going again. I thought I had heard Governor Brown talking about, being reported to have talked about, well, maybe we'll have to learn to live without it. "Well, maybe we'll have to learn to live without it." But any case, that's a really big deal. It's a big chunk, and it really adds to the impetus that we've got to come up with some efficiencies. Another, another point, when you look through the PowerPoint presentation, you know, page five, we, we had a component here, the healthcare, that's, that's a big cost. The initial rate was 18, and we, we got them down to only a 12% increase.
Exactly.
But that, that's a good reduction. But in, in a world of 2.5% inflation, you can't do 12% increases in a significant component for very many years before everything explodes. So there are going to be some real challenges coming down the pike, and the other things that have been mentioned tonight, we've talked about in the past, you know, the affordable care, coverage for the hourly employees, possibly, now, this doesn't include the luxury tax, does it? The luxury plan tax?
No, it does not.
May or may not so. Yeah, we've got some stuff coming down the pike here, and we really need to bear down on the efficiencies. And one of the questions I asked during the committee meeting was, well, looking at our budget, the best we can do now with all the uncertainties about what's going to happen in the next few weeks or months up there in Sacramento, looking at this budget here, what are the categories that are most likely to vary from our projection for whatever reason, because we're all, we know we're dealing with uncertainty? And the answer was, it's the revenues. So revenues are perhaps less certain than the projections we've got for the expenditures, and we've got some things that are coming down the pike here, and we really need to be taking longer-term looks. Budgeting doesn't just mean looking at, you know, one, looking ahead one fiscal year.
I agree. Yes. Yeah, and I'll just echo what Dr. Salvage said, because I did neglect to mention the Prop 30, the Education Protection Act, and that's sunsetting at the end of 17, 18, and that does represent right now about 16.5 million dollars of our budget. And although there is a lot of things being said in Sacramento about what they may or may not do, reserving as, for that as another item we need to reserve for, as well as all these other increases, is vitally important. The other thing I want to point out, that this is the Fund 01 budget for the, for the college, the general operating budget. We have other funds that the board will be approving tonight that's in that packet that are basically funds for a variety of other things, whether it's capital construction, whether it's the capital, whether it's, the GASB is a separate fund, for example, workers' comp is a separate fund. All those things are also in this budget as well. And we are talking about a rainy day fund of just a small amount of half million for STIRS. We're going to actually try to get more in that when we see, when the final numbers. That will be a reserve that's actually built into Fund 01, though that's where that money is going to be kept on, on the advice of our auditors.
Any other questions, comments? How about Mr. Martin down there? You might acquire it.
No, I, nothing, but I think I could add.
Yes? Nothing to add? Okay, so what else?
A motion to approve.
Forgive me, President Brown, forgive me, but, and if I missed this, I'm terribly sorry, but you need to open the public hearing and close it before the vote, if you haven't done that.
I sure haven't.
Oh, you have done it already?
I have not.
Okay. So, so this is a public hearing on the agenda, so it needs to be opened as a public hearing?
Thank you.
And if there's no public comment-
We're so glad you're here.
[laughing]
Okay, so we need to open this discussion to the public, is that what you're saying?
Back, so with the gavel.
So do we have anyone in the audience that wishes to address the board on this topic? Do we have any? We have no cards, so no one is, so now we close it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, any other comments? Yes, go ahead.
You just missed your opportunity to use the gavel, yeah. We have so few opportunities in the course of a meeting, and you just missed, I just wanted to-
So, do we, so we, do we have a motion then to approve this tentative vote? Okay, so we have a motion to approve this tentative budget for 2015, 16, and we have a second by trustee Salvage. Advisor vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so motion carries unanimously. I was, you know, I just thought this was just for discussion for some reason.
I thought it was, too.
Yeah, I didn't realize it was-
I, I, I will take the hit for that. I should have been clear about the public hearing part. I actually missed it myself.
That's okay. We've had a lot tonight.
So I just want to quickly say thank you to Joe and to Diane and Laconia and so many of the staff for putting this thing together. This, every year is, is quite a challenging task, and it's been that much more challenging over the last probably half a dozen years, given the, the nature of the state's economics. So thank you, team, for that.
May I say something? Joe?
Yes.
This is really a well-presented budget. I like the way you got your graphs and you have your, this is good.
I would be, I appreciate that so much, but the graphs actually came from Ryan Corner, so.
Well, I think-
Did good.
Whomever did it, we are on the ball here, because I don't need to do a lot of reading. I could look.
It's a team effort.
Quickly. I like this. Thank you.
Pictures are good.
Thank you.
I asked for pictures we got, and they worked out well. So that's good. So we can move to item I, if you'd like.
Yeah, why don't we move to item I? What is item I?
So item I is approval of board policy revisions. This is the Board Policy Review Committee, and more specifically, Dr. Mann.
To man.
Okay, the first policy is Board Policy 4020. This is on program curriculum and course development. And again, the new language is in red, and it is legally required. And one of the major things in here is a definition of a credit hour. This is required by the accredited, actually by the Department of Education, that everything be expressed in credit hours, that there's uniformity across the entire United States. I was a little confused by the term "the clock hour," so I talked, checked with Ms. Colros, and that's for some of the non-credit courses, they use clock hours, but then it has to all be converted back into credit hours so that we are in conformance with the requirements of the Department of Education. So are there any questions on this? This has gone through the, the shared governance process and comes to us from, with approval of the College Council, correct? Yes.
Any question?
Ms. Colros, that's correct, right?
This is a 10-plus, so that it's approval of the Academic Senate.
Oh, it has the Academic Senate. Okay, right. So this is a 10-plus, one has approval of the Academic Senate.
Great. So what's the next one?
Let's do them all three.
Okay, so I'm asking if there's any questions on this. Apparently there isn't. The next one is Board Policy 5015, and if you'll see here, the only changes in this are really editorial. It changes, it is the policy of the district and just starts off policy. We take out intercession and, or just say semester or summer session, and then we change the person who, the title of the person who develops the regulations from the Associate Dean of Admissions and Records to the Superintendent President. Are there any questions on this?
Any questions, trustees? No, next.
And then the next is the policy, which we looked at last time on the non-residence tuition, and trustee Salvage was actually right. It didn't make any sense. Ms. Colros and I both agreed on that when we read it. So we have redone it to make it clear that this capital fee applies to students who are not legal residents of the state of California, which would be students who are both citizens and non-citizens. Anyone who is not a legal resident.
Okay. Justee, we'll have a question.
So on this policy, I also read the, the following memo that came from the chancellor's office, and then it defines, or it has the legal opinion of the non-residents. So I was just wondering, instead of redefining all of that again, why wouldn't we just, in our board policy, refer back to the definitions of where these, these terms otherwise charge these fees, exempt victims of persecution? I mean, that just follows what the chancellor said. I guess I'm just, I always try to be as, not repeat things in as many places as possible because there's always a possibility of being an error in one place or another. So why wouldn't we just refer back to the chancellor's memo? So I don't know.
I, I think the reason why we do that, if you look at the heading of each of these policies, there's lots of citations of California code and chancellor's office regulations, and we try to have all of our policies in one place so people don't have to look anywhere except in the board policy. And also, although I don't think we're always successful, we do try to have a language which is a little less legalistic and easier to follow. But I think the main thing is, our board policies are on the campus's website, and you look there and you see the complete board policy. You don't have to do all this looking up and checking. But if you want to, at the top of each policy, it gives you the education code and the Title V code, where you can go and find the definitions. I think that's, that's the reason why we, why we do it. Plus, the, the regulations often change, and that's why we have this consultant that we work with from the league who updates us annually so we can update our policies, but some, we don't always have to do that, whereas we might have to keep updating the references. That's, that's the rationale.
Well, if the legal opinion or if the definitions change, then you would have to go back and, and update this anyway. That's why it makes more sense to me to just reference the, I guess, the defining document.
Any other question? So, do we want to change that, or do we want to make a motion?
I, I think if we change this one, we'd have to go through and change all the policies because they're all filled with references back. That's what, that's what these policies in a very well way are. They are a, a compiling and pulling together of many, many policies from different sources, some from the chancellor's office, some from the legislation.
Well, this is the first time I've actually seen these definitions, so.
Right. Well, that, I think, was, really should not have been sent out to all the members. We have, for every one of these policies, we get background like that, and it usually just goes to the committee.
Could I have maybe an opinion from Director Colros on this?
I think since the last time we brought this-
Can you come to the mic? I'm sorry, Crystal. Thank you.
Sure.
John and Jane Q. Public need to hear you.
Hi. So I included the legal opinion from the chancellor's office because at the last time this was presented, trustee Salvage had a question, and I just wanted to explain that why we substituted the new language was in line with what the legal opinion was. So that's the only reason we included it in your packet. Does that make sense?
So, well, yeah, but this is still back to my other question. I mean, what happens if the definitions change or some of the terms change, then we end up having to change the policy instead of just referencing, you know, as defined by the legal opinion X?
Because the legal opinion might change if ed code changes, or Title V changes. So I would get updates from Libra Cassidy of the changes, and then I would have to bring it back anyway.
Okay, this is common practice, and it's fine.
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve all three? All three?
We have approval of all three.
Okay, we have a motion by trustee Thompson. Do we have a second?
Second.
And a second by trustee Salvage. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Advisor.
An advisor vote?
Aye.
All right. Okay, so motion carries to approve all three policies revisions. Thank you. Okay, now we move to information items. Item J, legislative advocacy.
So in your packets, in your board agendas, under item J, is a PowerPoint presentation that Dr. Corner will quickly present. It's an update on the legislative advocacy activities this year, and then Dr. Mann will also contribute after Dr. Corner is done.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So I just want to first thank the Legislative Advocacy Committee and the board members who are on it for a great year. I feel like we've been able to accomplish a lot. I feel like it's been an exciting year for the efforts that we've put forward, and I think that we've learned a lot about how to do things even better next year. So what I want to do is quickly go through what the board's legislative agenda was and highlight some of the areas of accomplishment and some of the areas that we definitely need to continue to work on. So I won't go into too much detail. I'll let the PowerPoint speak for itself, but I do want to say that in the term, in the area of increased funding for unfunded mandates, I think you saw in Joe, Joe's presentation that we had 11 million dollars funded in unfunded mandates, one-time money, and we saw growth in our base. And so we have been able to successfully advocate as a system, I won't say that it was all PCC, to get the type of funding that we need to support our students and to support our communities. In terms of increased student access, we have seen our growth enrollment go up. We have not been as successful as we like in making sure that the growth funding is accepting of the population we serve. It's still mainly based on our service area rather than those students who are actually attending our school, but it's something we continue to work on. In terms of incentivizing innovative programs, we have submitted a lot of grants, and I will highlight those towards the tail end of this presentation. And the one that is not in there is we did submit for the Innovation Award from the state. We did not get it this year, but we're well-prepared to attempt it again next year, should it come up. For increase to build needed facilities, there were multiple bond initiatives put on as bills across the legislature, both in the Senate and in the Assembly, and we don't see one that is going to be effective for serving our needs right now, but there are also attempts at propositions that will be able to address the K through 14, and we feel those are very promising and will, will lead to some funding that could quite possibly finally allow us to build a new U building. For supporting our CTE programs, the state has approved additional career pathways, and we have been submitting for opportunities to develop apprenticeships through the Department of Labor. For participation in decisions related to performance-based funding, this is an ongoing effort, and it's probably something that if the Legislative Advocacy Committee deems appropriate, we should continue to keep a watchful eye on and make sure that our needs are heard. Supporting recently passed legislation, one of the highlights of that was SB 850, which allowed for the pilot programs for bachelor's degree. We did submit. We were not one of the 15 chosen, but we are well-prepared to continue to develop two-year programs and certificates to put us in a better spot should this opportunity come again. And lastly, we are continuing to evaluate our lobbying firms at both the federal and the state level. In that realm, let's talk a little bit about the federal activities. Beginning at the, in February of this year, our, many of our board members went to a conference in Washington, DC, and through the scheduling of our federal lobbyists, Cassidy and Associates, they were able to meet with representatives of various departments and promote the programs that we have here at PCC that are unique and innovative and really should be nationally recognized. They were also able to hear comments from these departments on what the needs of, of the nation are and how we can better fit those models. As follow-up to that, members of the staff, including Dean Davila, who's here, and Dean Klein, who is not today, and myself, went to Washington, DC and had follow-up meetings with members of staff from these different departments to really gain a keen insight into what the model was moving forward in education. And rather than spend a lot of time, I'll sum it up in one word: jobs. And that is certainly where we heard from every organization we worked with. To that end, we have submitted various grants this year. We submitted a Title V grant. It's an HSI grant, and it will help us develop our second-year pathway, which is Phase 2 of our Pathways Program under Dr. Klein's leadership. And I want to thank him and his team for developing that grant. It's currently in review. We put forward a STEM grant through the Minority Science and Engineering Improvement Program, and this was the first time we've put forward a grant like this in several years. And what it essentially did was create a second-year pathway specifically for STEM students. One of the things that we're attempting to do in our grants is to build on the internal, internal capacity we have so that we can, number one, justify to ourselves that we're being good with our money and really not duplicating our effort, but do the same for those that are reading it at the federal level. We put in for a Health Careers Opportunity Program related to dental, who I think you all heard are in need of some upgrades related to their CAD labs, and we have put in two proposals for renewals on our Trio programs. Currently in development, and if you saw me typing away, that was the first-in-the-world grant today. That is due June 30th, and we will be putting in a program specifically to deal with the needs of adult students, those who are 25 and older. Students who are working, who have families, and who aren't able to take advantage of That is due June 30th, and we will be putting in a program specifically to deal with the needs of adult students, those who are 25 and older, students who are working, who have families, and who aren't able to take advantage of our Pathways Program because it would not allow or fit with their work schedule. We are also putting in for the Center of Excellence for Veterans Student Services. And with our work with Cassidy and Associates, we feel that we are well-situated for people to know the successes that we've had with our veterans and also know what we can accomplish if we are able to receive this grant. It is not a lot of money for the Veterans Grant, but it's the recognition of all the hard work that everyone in that department has put in and also all of the support that the Board has given to our veterans. The future grant efforts, we are working on an NSF STEM grant, which will not be available till later in the year. We're working on a National Endowment for Humanities, and the Cassidy Group is helping us kind of define what the criteria are that the funders are looking for. We will be looking at an additional NSF grant focused on advanced technology education, and that's one that Dr. Douglas, I know, is very keen on. And one probably even more up his wheelhouse is an NSF grant focused on GeoPaths, which actually looks at extracurricular activities to help students learn in the areas of the geosciences. In terms of the, those are really real grant opportunities that will come out in the near future, and we will apply for those grants. In addition to that, we are working with the U.S. Department of Agriculture. We found that we don't actually currently meet the requirement to be a minority-serving agricultural college, and we're working with their staff in connection with the Cassidy and Associates Group so that we can find out what those definitions really are and make sure that we put ourselves in a position to apply for those grants in the future. Likewise, we're working with the Department of Labor to situate ourselves with apprenticeships and internship models so that when their grants become available, we will be prime candidates. At the state level, the Board did attend the CCLC Legislative Conference in January, and that was the big kickoff for working with our legislators on the bills that we think would support our communities and our college. The Board also hosted its first annual Legislative Breakfast in April 2015, and I think that was quite successful, and I look forward to it being even more successful next year. I certainly hope we can drag Dr. Mann to it, even though she will not be running again. I think everyone would be pleased to see her at that breakfast. We're going to continue to participate on weekly calls. Dr. Miller has weekly calls with the McCallum Group, and I have weekly calls as well, looking at different levels, one for the CEOs and one for more the staff level. And of course, Dr. Miller has been working with the legislators himself, the Assembly members, and our Senator. Very brief updates. I won't go into each of these, but I want to highlight a couple. Number one, AB 176, which was the one for dental licensing. This was one that came up immediately. It was urgent. It fit with our dental programs' needs. The committee supported it. Dr. Miller wrote a letter of support, and it did pass 80 to 0. The data disaggregation bill has passed, and I even got emails about it today. They're making some small tweaks in the language, and they seem pretty confident that it will be able to get through the next chamber. And of course, Assemblymember Holden's Bill 288 passing 75 to nothing in the Assembly. So, some of the, see, the big key initiatives that this Legislative Advocacy Committee has been behind are doing gangbusters. And I think that our continued focus and not only our work with the legislators, but our work with the community members and other educational leaders has really helped to explain to people the benefit of these programs, not just to the college but also the community. A few to be on the lookout for, a disappointing one, AB 393 was a bill that would establish a Veterans Resource Center grant program at the state level. Did not make it out of appropriations. That may be something that we want to look to in the future to get behind a little more and see if we can't push it through. AB 1010 actually sets minimum rehiring standards for adjunct faculty, and that is something that we are also keen at continuing to look at. There's been multiple school safety bills, and AB 967 is one example of one that has made it through and is on its third read in the Assembly at the time of writing this. So, next steps, just to summarize, staff will continue to develop grant development and advocacy on related bills. But one of the things that we're really trying to do is to broaden our scope in terms of what we want to advocate for. And to do that, we've reached out to the shared governance groups, to the faculty, to the staff, to the Management Association, and to the students, and asked them, what are some of the concerns that you have so that we can then bring that to the Legislative Advocacy Committee in preparation for them defining what their agenda will be in the next year. So, we're well on our way to the next calendar, and we're definitely looking forward to continued successes and the hard and exciting work of our advocacy efforts.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, you guys?
I have nothing to add.
Ryan did a great job. I think he did a good job on that.
So, I'll just add very quickly that I was very pleased to see the Board and staff work as effectively as we did together. And one of the big goals we had was, on these lobbying trips, was to go actually find out what we needed to find out and then come back and turn words into action. So, I think, as you can see from Ryan's excellent presentation, that the combined efforts of the Board and staff are leading to actual grant submissions and more. And so, I think I would compliment the Board Subcommittee for establishing a good model to follow going forward.
And then, I do have a comment. I just didn't have anything to add to his report.
Sorry.
Okay. I think one of the reasons why we've been successful this year is we have had excellent staff support. And I think our work with Casting Associates has, you know, we will be productive. I mean, they give us information on the grants, they help position us, they tell us what's coming up. We're not going to get all the grants, but we will get some. But before, we didn't have any of this. For example, I don't think any of us would ever thought we should go to the Department of Agriculture. And when we get there, we find out they can't even figure out how to give all their money away.
Amazing.
And that's something we should get. The other thing I want to say, I think it's really important that we try to work with the shared governance groups, particularly with the students, because we always try to take our student trustee and it's off to another student. I know Kelly went to Washington, D.C. with us, because the legislatures really want to hear from the students. They want to hear what the student experience has been, and it is very, very effective. And we think it's really effective if we go in together rather than the students go, and then two days later, we go, and then they get a little tired. So, I think that's a really, it's a really good plan. And I think it would be effective if we actually would have faculty members with us, too.
Absolutely.
Particularly in the, maybe with the state legislature, because there's a certain credibility the faculty has that nobody else has, and it also sends a really clear message.
Get to that. Okay.
Any other members of the committee have any comments?
No, I would just echo what you've said about the Department of Agriculture. That was one of the most amazing experiences going. I mean, who would thought they had all this money to hand out? But they do. And the matter is, the challenge is to be able to qualify for it.
I also would like to echo that I think that this has been one of our most effective years in legislative advocacy, and I think, you know, it's having the dedicated resources and certainly the knowledge and expertise of Dr. Coroner. But I also agree with Dr. Mann. I think being at the legislative meetings with our students was really important. It was very effective, and it puts us on the same page of advocating for the same kinds of things that are important to the students and having them echo and underscore what we, as the Board, are saying. And then also having our administrators with us, and we're able to kind of divide and conquer. So, we're able to cover a lot of ground.
Yep. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So, my last report is a Superintendent President's report is no report. I don't have anything to add tonight. I do want to say, however, I do recognize that you see that Susan Bricker is in our audience tonight. Susan, we introduced as the new Director of Admissions and Records, and she's here tonight. Thanks for being here, Ms. Bricker. She comes to us from Ventura College with 22-plus years' experience, as I recall, 25-plus years' experience, and we're very, very pleased to have you, and thank you so much. And maybe you and Kathy can carpool, you know. Welcome. Thank you.
Welcome. So, now, we'll turn to announcements, and we will turn to Dr. Douglas.
Thank you, President Brown. First of all, I'm astounded that Bob didn't have a closing statement. But I want to echo Dr. Gerald's statement. We really appreciate your leadership in stepping into this role, and thank you so much for your service for that. I say that personally and on behalf of the Management Association. The second thing is that this will be my last night in this seat. We have a new Board. I started coming to Board meetings about eight and a half years ago, and I became a dean, and I've learned an awful lot. And so, I've been sitting in this role for six years, and it's time to let someone else have a turn. But I want to thank you. I appreciated the chance to be here and to be part of this. Thanks.
Okay, we'll miss you. Ms. Carangella.
I'm going to miss you, too, Dr. Douglas. Good evening, trustees. On behalf of the Classified Senate, I'm happy to announce that tomorrow is our general meeting from 11:30 to 1:00. It's going to be in the Circadian Lounge. We're going to go ahead and take that opportunity to introduce our newly-elected Senators. Also, welcome new classified hired staff. We're recognizing those that are retiring and any classified employee who has recently won awards. In addition, we're going to announce our scholarship recipient winner, so we're very excited about this event. We're going to have pizza, so I hope you guys will join us tomorrow if you're available. In addition, the Classified Senate would like to personally thank you, specifically Trustee Mann, Trustee Waugh, and Trustee Brown for making yourselves available to meet with the classified staff for coffee, lunch, and chat on June 9. We also want to thank Dr. Coroner for also arranging this event. And I can't tell you enough how much of an overwhelming amount of positive feedback we had from our classified staff who went and really enjoyed the event. I know I went, and I personally enjoyed it. And it really fostered open dialogue between the Board and the classified staff, and so we're very appreciative of your time, and we really hope that the Board will consider and continue making themselves available and providing these types of events. And then, just echoing what Dr. Douglas said, we also want to thank Dr. Miller for serving as our interim president this past year, and also for all you have done for classified staff and collaborating with us and meeting with us on a monthly basis. So, thank you for your service as well.
Thank you.
Okay, and now, we have our associated students. Arvin Morales.
Hi. Good evening, trustees. I, first of all, I have to say I'm honored for being here and actually talking to you guys for the first time. I am actually very glad to announce that our Board has all our summers set, so we for sure will have our meetings and making sure our future leaders are well-prepared for the next academic year. Also, I do have AS Board applications out. We do have some positions that are open. My advisors and my Board and I will make sure that those positions will be filled in, hopefully, before the academic year, so they could be well-prepared to start leading our students out there. So, yeah, thank you very much.
Great. And our student trustee, do you have anything you'd like to tell us?
No.
No? Well, I would like to welcome you, okay?
Thank you.
All right. Trustee Salvage, no report. Trustee Thompson?
I'd just like to join and echo for Dr. Miller. He stepped into what might be described as a wee bit of a mess. And I think done an extraordinary job of handling that and established or helped establish a lot of peace on campus, and that's really great. And so, we're very grateful for that, and I just want to say that publicly.
Thank you, Trustee Thompson.
Yeah, I echo that, and it's unfortunate we had such of a big agenda today because this would have been the night when we had our cake and our ice cream and our time, but we'll make it up. Oh, we will make it up. So, I have no report. Trustee Waugh?
Yes. We had the fourth meeting, four or five of our meetings on the Workforce Development Task Force from the Board of Governors, and I want to report that on July 1, we will be releasing the rolling draft of the recommendations, and so, we invite everyone to go online and to submit comments. Now, there are two key things, concepts, I think, that came, that are coming out of this, and we're talking a lot about regionalization, partnering with our educational resources so that we don't have competing resources. Employers talked about doing, going to one center to be able to offer internships and work experience rather than going to multiple colleges to try to access students. So, I hope we all start thinking about that. The other big item that came up under the workforce development was how do we fund this? There's been a lot of, I guess, consternation, I guess, about how the CTE programs are funded and how sometimes they're seen as sort of a stepchild to the rest of the academic programs. And so, there's been a lot of talk now about how we try to equalize some of the funding and make it more equitable, more accessible, because we're talking about over a million jobs that are going to be coming out within the next five years that are going to require middle-skill job skills. So, anyway, something for all of us to think about. Also, I wanted to report that last night was my last night as the President of the L.A. County Schools Trustees Association, although I'm moving on to the Vice President of Programs. Yeah, so, not quite off the board yet. But one of the interesting programs that we're coming up with, and hopefully, everyone will attend, and you'll, all of our Board members will encourage their K-12s to attend, is the County Committee Elections. The County Committee is in charge of the reorganization, and they handle any disputes that come up when there are transfers requested and school boards offer a decision that is not also agreed upon by all parties, and so, they become sort of the arbitrating party. So, one of the big issues that's coming up on the County Committee is that K-12s are, almost all K-12s are going to be looking at some redistricting, and so, this will fall on the County Committee. So, we will be doing a training in September on the new responsibilities of the County Committee, and then following that in October is the election of the officers for the County Committee. So, I hope you all will attend that.
I have nothing to report.
No report. Okay. So, we'll move on to future Board meeting dates. Before I get into that, can someone remind me what's the deadline for us to have our trustee self-evaluation performance? When is the deadline for that?
Oh, I don't, I don't know, but I think it's pretty soon.
Yeah, I think the Subcommittee was appointed at the last meeting.
That's correct. So, I need to know what is the date.
We have to look at the policy. Ryan, do you recall from the policy?
We have that done.
Someone could look it up online. They have a computer.
I'll look up the exact date. As long as the committee is convened, they need to begin reviewing, as Dr. Mann has said, the ethics statement and to pick a tool for their self-evaluation.
Right. But what's the deadline we're supposed to be?
Yeah, we'll take a look. I don't recall a specific deadline. Just need to begin to work.
There is, I think there is a deadline.
There is a deadline. So, Trustee Waugh and Trustee Thompson and Trustee Fellow are in the committee, and I would like to admonish you guys to get your, to get with it.
When does Dr. Fellow return from his?
You may have to do it without him.
Pork trip. He's going to be back on the 12th of July.
Yeah, I think he's almost, I think he's almost home.
I will get with Trustee Thompson, and we will discuss.
Please, so we can get this going, and so, we'll meet our deadline. Okay, great. Thank you very much. Trustee Waugh? Okay, so, we have our proposed future business meetings. We are Wednesday, the 1st, and dark. We get a break. So, we'll meet again on July 15, August 5, August 19. Now, we have a proposed date here for, okay, on August, on September 2, we'll meet. Now, there is a fall retreat proposed on the 12th. Is that something that we want to do and put on the calendar so we know for sure, because we do need to have one? And September 12, should we just say that will be our day for our retreat?
That date might be problematic. I have to check some things.
Well, do that soon so we could figure, because we do have to get one, yeah.
So, perhaps Ms. Thompson can send out a poll when people are ready, because it is, I think, we're getting up to the date when we have to set our goals.
Right. Ms. Thompson? Can you please poll the Board to see what will be the soonest we can have our retreat in September? Thank you. Okay, so, do we have any future agenda items? Anyone with any future agenda items that would like to be placed, to be discussed? All is well? Oh, well, apparently, there's none, so we are going to adjourn this meeting. I think you guys just wanted to close it.